All right, all right. Welcome, everybody, to the August 27, 2025 CDV Edina Planning Commission meeting. On behalf of the rest of the commission, we want to extend our heartfelt thoughts and prayers to our neighbors and friends in Minneapolis and the Annunciation Community for that extreme tragedy they went through today. Also, on behalf of the Planning Commission, we just appreciate everyone who is here in attendance and those tuning in remotely. Say it every time, but your curiosity, your participation, and your feedback is vital to this process as we navigate change together here in Edina specifically regarding the ways in which we'd like to use our land. If you'd like to participate outside of these meetings, the best way to do so is through our engagement website, which is www.bettertogetheredina.org. That's where you can find all things dealing with land use, proposals, past proposals, current ones, ones that have already been done. There is a map, so you can find what's close to home, and anything that you share on there, it makes its way to us, and we vow to consider it as we make our recommendations for approval or denial. Without further ado, we will call the meeting to order. And then roll call.
Commissioner Nelson.
Here.
Commissioner Alkire.
Here.
Commissioner Pedia.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Felton.
Here.
Commissioner Honeman.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here.
Before the next thing, I just want to mention, too, we do have one public hearing tonight, and to participate in that, for those tuning in remotely, we'll get to those instructions when that time approaches. Next, we have the approval of tonight's meeting agenda.
Motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the approval of the prior meeting minutes from August 13.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right, next, we have the community comment period, which is your chance for anyone who is here in person that would like to testify about any topic that's not on tonight's agenda. You have three minutes to do so. You can come up to either podium, state your full name, address, and when the light turns green, the time begins. When it's red, we'll ask you to wrap up your comments. Anyone here for a community comment? Did you see a couple heads shaking to the side? So we will move on to our public hearing. So as I mentioned, we have one tonight. Typical process for a public hearing, someone wants to do something with their land that doesn't quite conform to our code. Staff does some research, helps guide them in different ways to try to conform, but if they prefer to continue without conforming, they have a chance to do so. Staff puts together a report based on factual findings, and they collaborate across different departments and gets us all the information we need to consider an approval or denial for that request. They do so in a staff report. After the report, they provide a presentation to us, which you'll see tonight. And then after the presentation, there's an opportunity for the applicant to provide their own. Then we'll have staff and applicants stand for questions/answers between the Planning Commission and them. Then we'll open it to the public hearing. And the way in which to participate for that, again, I'll give you instructions a little later, but it's calling a phone number. After we close the public hearing, then we deliberate as a Planning Commission and make our recommendation for approval or denial. With that, I'll pass it over to Director Teague.
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. This project, the location of this property that we're looking at this evening is just south of crosstown, west of Highway 100, in a single-family residential district. Properties, the site and the properties around it are all zoned R1. Here's a look at the existing site. It's about 27,000 square feet in size, so it's a larger lot. You can see there's a lot of trees and growth on the site. It's located at the intersection of 64th and Warren Avenue. Here's a look at the lot. You can see compared to some of the other lots around it. It's quite a bit larger in size. This area is unique in that it was, the entire area was platted as 50-foot-wide lots. However, when they were, each home was built, they combined lots and built on larger. So the lot we're looking at here originally was platted as four lots, but they were combined and one house built on it. So the proposal this evening is to just divide the property into two lots, remove the existing home, and then build two new homes. The site is currently accessed off of 64th Street by this driveway here. The applicant has provided in the packet two alternatives for grading the site. They could take advantage of the existing driveway to serve both lots. This is the first example. So the existing driveway would be utilized to service both lots. If this is the chosen alternative, before any building permits were issued, they would need to establish a private easement over Lot 1, over that driveway, to allow access down to Lot 2. The second alternative is to provide a new access off of Warren. Both the building pads that they're showing in these configurations would be code compliant with our setbacks, and the details of that would be looked at as part of individual building permits for each site. This would trigger the tree protection ordinance. They would be entitled to remove trees within the building pad area and 10 feet extended and within the driveway area, and then five feet off of the driveway. They could remove those trees without replacement. Any trees removed outside of those areas would need to be replaced, subject to the tree preservation ordinance. So within this neighborhood, because some of the lots are larger in size, the minimum lot standards are determined by the median of all properties within 500 feet, and the median comes out to just over 10,000 square feet, 75 feet in width, and 135 feet in depth. So both these lots would be code compliant with our minimum standards. Here's a look at the proposed plat. So with that, staff is recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report. And the applicant is here, doesn't have a formal presentation, but if you have any questions, he's here to answer. And with that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Carrie. Maybe before that, welcome the applicant up if you'd have any words to say, or just also stand with Carrie for questions. Just introduce yourself.
Tim Bellin, owner of Bellin Construction. We do a handful of homes in Edina every year, so familiar with the process. We have done a lot split in Edina before, kind of similar to this one. Maybe not quite as intense to clean up the previous lot versus this one. Obviously, I think it'd be a good, you know, good thing for the community, kind of clean up that space. We've owned it for a year now, and it's kind of very overgrown and, you know, kind of a lot of nuisance stuff going on there. So, yeah, thanks for your time and consideration of this.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Any questions from fellow commissioners? Yeah, Commissioner Felton.
Couple of questions. There were a couple of comments on Better Together, one about timeline and two about tree removal. So wondering if you've kind of catalogued some of the trees in there?
Yeah.
As of now, and also kind of what your timeline might be?
Yeah. We'd like to get going on the grading, removal of the home as soon as possible, and then the grading, hopefully, you know, as soon as this is approved. I know we did have a licensed arborist come out and do a tree preservation plan for the property. I'm trying to think what direction that would be, kind of towards, what's the park?
To the south. Where?
The park, towards Normandale Park on the lot, whatever direction that would be. There's a handful of oaks that we would try to preserve. Most everything else on the lot was deemed.
A weaved tree.
Deemed, yeah, to be removed. But we typically do replant very good-sized trees when we replant on these properties, and our most common thing is we spade in, you know, a couple 30-foot trees and stuff in the new properties, which we do in all of our projects, so.
Thank you.
There was a pretty detailed tree inventory that was done on the site, and the city forester has that, so we're aware of the trees that are out there.
Any other questions? Yeah. Commissioner Pedia.
Just a quick one, thank you. Did you do the subdivision on Abbott?
Yep.
Yeah, Commissioner Smith.
Maybe I've got one. It just kind of came to me, but is there a reason, I guess it doesn't really matter, but you're conforming, but is there a reason you didn't just split them back into the original two lots each, and why they're different sizes?
Yep. So Warren Avenue has a pretty good grade to it, and I would like to do the second option you saw of having a front load instead of getting a variance and having them utilize the same driveway in the back. I would like to use the option where the new driveway is put on Warren Avenue, and in order to do that, because there's such a grade going down the hill, to make that lot wider in order to pull the driveway off the front, if you cut it just into two 100-foot wide lots now, the driveway would either be very steep, and we would need for a much larger retaining wall. By bringing it closer to the corner, the retaining wall size kind of come down, come down in size a little bit, so. And I think aesthetically probably looks better that way, rather than have a 12-foot retaining wall or a couple retaining walls.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you kind of covered some of the questions that I had as well here. But I'll try to think about this a little bit differently, so I get the grade variance. If we were to break this lot up into four parcels, 50 feet wide, it would probably be for each one, and then maybe 135 deep. Is that, is that possible, you know, given the grade concerns that you have and for Director Teague? Would that still fit in within what's reasonable compared to the homes surrounding?
Those would require variances for each of the four lots. They wouldn't meet width, area, they would meet the depth, because they're all 135 feet. But they would need those two variances for each new lot. This one is code compliant, no variances.
And from a grading standpoint and trying to get proper driveways and proper, you know, cars in and out and stuff, it'd be very, very, very difficult from my, in my opinion, on how to accomplish that, because I looked at trying to do maybe three on there at one time, and it just, it was kind of a nightmare to start planning that way, so.
Thank you.
Other questions? Just got a quick one. For those tuning in, between the two proposals, is there one that preserves more trees than the other, or any advantage over one than the other, minus what you mentioned about pulling the driveway off of Warren, since that's preferred?
Both would have the same amount of tree removal. Yeah, both would have the same amount of tree removal, and in my opinion, right now, I can clean up, if we're allowed to do it the way I want, I can clean up the front. I know the current pictures you saw, there's, there is a retaining wall kind of growing in all the bushes, and I know there's been trees kind of, branches, not trees, branches falling on the street and stuff, where I'd like to get in there and clean all that up and put nice new boulder walls, not just small retaining walls. The thought is to bring in big granite boulders and build nice walls that, you know, the neighbors and the new homeowners would like, you know, to see and look at and enjoy as their home.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for either party? Thank you. Appreciate your time. Like I mentioned, it's a public hearing, so for those who'd like to participate remotely, the way to do so, it'll probably pop up on the screen, but call the following number, Enter access code 2865-824-6524. Enter password 5454. Then press star 3 on your keypad to get into the queue to speak. While we wait, I guess I'd open the opportunity, anyone who's here that would like to testify, you can come up to the podium, state your full name and address, and you got three minutes to speak, either one. When the light turns green, your time begins, and when it turns red, we'd ask you to wrap up your comments. Thank you.
Okay. My name's Andre Suppley. I live at 6421, the adjacent property to the lot that's being subdivided. I can attest to, it is an extremely steep grade, my driveway, nobody wants to walk up it, everyone bottoms out driving up it, so just wanted to validate that. I am pretty relieved to hear about the forestry inventory, as well as the preservation intent to preserve the oaks, mature oaks that are quite large. I think that that is in line with Edina's own goals of maintaining green spaces. Trees are very effective for cooling. In summer, I think it helps us meet some of our energy efficiency goals by maintaining even these elements of it. One of my concerns is that, it's my understanding that that retaining wall that runs the length of it, there was a picture of it on screen before, was the city's wall, retaining wall? And I'm not sure if that's gotten lost in the process or what. In past instances, it has been the city that's come out to repair the wall, not the previous homeowner. The concern I have for it is that retaining wall abuts the retaining wall for my property to the south of this one. I would just like some clarification on, is that going to be the responsibility of the developer, who obviously has some ideas about it? Is that going to be the continued responsibility of the city? Similarly, I believe there might be an easement on some of that flat property that runs along Warren there. In the past, it has been a source of contention between the previous homeowner and many other people who have attempted to use that easement for various reasons. There has, and the city in those instances has pretty firmly proclaimed that it is their property to let people do with what they want. I do know that the city does in winter sometimes, for example, allow snowplow services to deposit snow along that easement, as well as maintain barrels of sand for people who get stuck trying to drive up Warren there. So just some clarification around that would be greatly appreciated, I think, probably for the developer as well, just so that there's no hiccups or snags along there. I didn't know that there'd be as many people here. I just, what I think the easement is, has been historically, I don't know if you would like me to submit this, or?
You can share it on, there should be a logo on the center of the, face up. And then just scooch it down in the center of the logo, you can move the keypad, yep.
I believe it's something like that. I'm not sure, because like I said, the only, this has been over 20 years of me living here, where it's been intermittent, and obviously, nobody's maintaining the wall currently, not the previous homeowner. The city has done some repairs over time, but nothing excessive or significant. So I just, I'd like to make sure this is all cleared up, regardless of what the plan is and stuff, and for the developer as well.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you for being here in person and sharing that good feedback. We did give instructions for those who might be tuning in remotely to participate. There's usually a one-minute lag. It's been over a minute. Do we have anyone in the queue ready to speak?
We do have someone in the queue, but they have not indicated that they would like to speak, so they would just need to hit star 3, and then I can unmute them if they're interested in speaking. So we'll give them about 20 seconds here.
Press star 3 to speak, please. I suppose if there's a minute lag, let's just give it a little more time.
Okay, so they have indicated that they would like to speak now, so I'm going to unmute the one caller on the line here. Caller, are you on the line? Oop, hold on one sec, actually. Okay, now we can hear you.
I was wondering if the survey had been done.
Can you, can you begin again? We missed the beginning of what you said. Just state your full name and address, and then you can speak.
Hi, I am, we live, hold on. Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, now we can hear you. Perfect. I was wondering if the survey had been done. Can you, can you begin again? We missed the beginning of what you said. Just state your full name and address, and then you can speak. Sure. Nancy Wilson, 64. Sorry, there's a delay here. Nancy Wilson.
Nancy, can you turn the volume off in the background?
Nancy Wilson, 64. I'm sorry, there's a delay here. Nancy Wilson. 6400 Mildred Avenue.
Great.
Can you turn the volume off in the background?
Couldn't quite hear that, but it sounded like you had a question about a survey being performed.
Let me try again. Sorry about that. Nancy Wilson, 6400 Mildred Avenue, so we're on an adjacent property. And my question was, has a survey been done, and can we get the results of that survey?
A public hearing is usually like, oh, you're just testifying, but we can, we can answer that. It has been performed, correct? And that is public record, so it can be shared, and it's accessible on bettertogetheredina.org and the information. Perhaps we can put it on the screen again? And then, do you have any other questions or statements you might have?
No, really, I think our questions are what trees along the adjacent property, what trees are at risk, and what will be preserved. Thus, the survey is of great interest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I guess to just quick answer that, and we can close a public hearing after that if there's no one else in the queue, but survey was performed, a tree survey was also performed. Results of those are available, and we can revisit them kind of during our discussion. Is there anyone else in the queue that'd like to speak, or is that it?
That was it.
Yes, I welcome a motion to close a public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Public hearings closed. Thank you, everyone, for showing up and testifying. Your feedback's very important. I guess before we open it up for deliberation here, it'd be nice to just get some clarity around what the, what the people who testified requested. So I guess, number one, the west side of these two lots, you know, there's a right-of-way that the city maintains that has vegetation on it. Maybe, Carrie, you could speak to that. And then, further, the developer could speak to the future of the wall and how it ties into another wall on the neighboring property before it turns into their driveway. And then, pull up the survey, as well as the tree survey, and speak to what is being preserved along the east side. Is that Mildred's on the east? Right? Yeah, you remember all that?
Yeah, I could cover a lot of that, I believe.
Great. Thank you.
So this is a blow-up of the survey that was done, and it shows the two proposed lots and the existing conditions underneath. The city engineer reviewed the plat and didn't say anything about that easement, but did indicate, within this plat, this is the easement line, this dashed line here, that would be established. And so I believe the retaining wall would be within that easement. So engineering felt the easements that are proposed on the plat are adequate for their needs. Didn't mention anything specific about the future of that retaining wall. We can have that answered before city council, so I don't know if that's something that the city has maintained in the past. Sounds like it has been. And then you can see some of the trees on this survey as well, but I'll let the developer speak to what trees can be preserved here on one of these graphics.
Yes, Carrie, maybe just quick further about, I mean, cities maintain retaining walls all over the place. For instance, you know, on the Opus site right by here, you know, the city built a new wall, but Opus is going to, per their plan, take it down and regrade the site. So some of it depends on, you know, the approved plans, and then falls on, you know, the developer, whoever, to grade the entire surface, which might include some of the city's right-of-way, so that is a common situation. And I guess we'd like you to just further clarify, to what extent, you know, along, like, how far into that right-of-way, how far not, and then how does it tie into that south part?
Yeah. So, obviously, I'm glad you brought up the point of your wall and this wall. There would have to be, I honestly haven't looked at the exact condition where they meet. I've just kind of, I've been, I've been out to the site dozens of times, and just that wall is very, I mean, it's deteriorating all over. So we'd probably have to work up some kind of, an agreement on a start and stop point there of what to do with the wall, but the thought was, what is currently on the easement, we would redo that. I mean, it's not something I want to leave and then start a new wall behind it, because it's, it would be putting lipstick on a pig, in my opinion. It's just, it's, it's, it needs to go. It's falling down, there's trees growing into it. It's probably a hazard at some point. And then, the tree question, I think these, the larger oaks that were going to be saved were kind of along this lot line here, where I'm putting the cursor. A lot of the other trees, though, on the site were, were all deemed not to be saved, which, a lot of the intense vegetation and trees are growing into that long retaining wall that runs along Warren there. In order to redo that wall, they would need to go, and the arborists did look at them, and they deemed them, just the fact that they're growing in and out of that wall, is they're not really a very healthy tree at this point, so.
I guess along the east side specifically, maybe you touched on that, and I was too focused looking at some of the images, but on the right side of the property line, right, Mildred's on east of Warren, like, what trees are along that property line?
Are you saying along the driveway here?
Yeah, and then farther down, not much.
There's, there's not really, I mean, there's one in the upper corner on 64th that's actually not on, that's not on our property. We obviously wouldn't, we wouldn't touch that or anything on the lot line there. And the driveway, actually, it's all asphalt coming down along this side in its current condition that goes back to a garage that's sitting kind of back, if you can see where I'm waving the cursor, there's a garage currently back there, and there's kind of a driveway that runs all the way along there in the existing condition, so there's really not any tree. So there's really not any trees right along that lot line that we would be taking down.
Those, in the southeast corner, those would remain from what you see?
Yes, yep.
I don't know if it'd be helpful for others to like just pull up the image of the preferred, like grading plan, just so we can kind of talk off of that, so we can see the extent of the proposed wall. Because this is, this is the alternative one, correct?
This is one. I'll let you do that. Yes, so this is the proposal I like. Where the corner lot here off of 64th Street, this driveway would just kind of move over right where it's shown here, proposed. And then the new driveway off of Warren would come, I don't know if you can follow my curse here, come up in between the two lots, you kind of see a solid dark line here. There's actually about a retaining, a retaining wall that goes anywhere from about three feet up to seven feet. That would be large granite boulders along here, just to get the grade elevation to drop down in between the two lots to allow for that, the driveway coming in off of Warren. Because currently, right here, there's about, it starts from almost no, in this corner here, the grade is very flat and as the street drops, this retaining wall jumps up about 10 feet, kind of partial retaining wall, partial grade of just kind of going up the hill. It's kind of a crumble of everything going up there.
I guess for that future southwest corner, as it, you know, attaches to a neighbor's wall, like, do you have, I mean, is that a proposed wall, that whole set? Are you grading that down and bringing the wall inside, kind of like what you're showing?
This wall would be redone.
Okay.
Along the front there. And then we'd do a little bit of slope here and there would be some new, there would actually be, I think we actually have one other proposal with this. These walls are actually turned this way and there's another wall that sits, it kind of steps up as you go up the street. So as you're looking at it from the street, it would actually be two tiers. One where the existing wall is and then one in about five or six feet as you go towards the house. It would kind of step up off the street, just to help maintain grade.
Yes, one question I'd have, maybe following up on this for you, Kerry, and maybe staff, is the neighbor to the south where you can kind of see that retaining wall goes a little to the east, some of that is on city right-of-way, correct? And then if, when they're doing this, how much could the city contribute or the developer to? I mean, it looks like it's a 10, 20-foot max, like, wall section. How much could be done to, you know, replace that essentially, if that neighbor was open to it?
On the neighbor's property?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's an easement over that or if that's something that the city would do, but we can, we can sure ask engineering of that. We have the legal department here, because I have a different understanding of you about, than you about. The easement is the city's to come in and access if they need to. And I suppose if they disrupt the retaining wall, they have to replace it. But if your retaining wall is falling down, it's on you. Unless it's the city's retaining wall. I'm not sure. The engineering has not said that is ours. So that I can't answer if that's something that we've been maintaining.
But that would just be something that would be good to get some clarity around for the neighbor.
Yes.
Again, obviously, if they're redoing this whole wall and it's tying right into another one and you have this large grade, you're going to disrupt it. Might as well help make it a collaborative win-win. Just, I'm glad you brought that up. That's just a unique situation we don't typically encounter, where usually something peters out into like a matching grade or like the wall matching is more of a simple operation, but piling boulders up next to a modular block wall might not be ideal for anyone.
Kerry, that was my question to maybe clarify for staff. If it is the city's wall, while boulders sound a lot nicer than what's there, how exactly does that work because after the property is sold, the boulders are a lot more expensive, I imagine, to then maintain and repair in 20 years? So sort of just sorting that out feels kind of important for all parties involved.
Right, they would sort that out as part of, you know, they would need a access permit there to come in off Warren. So they would coordinate that with our engineering department and both property owners.
Okay, anyone have any questions for all the parties for that before we deliberate further? Hopefully, some of that information helps and it sounds like more clarity would come before a city council ruling on this. But this is why we have public hearings. Thank you. I appreciate that. I guess welcome deliberation between the planning commissioner and proposed vote.
I just have a comment. Since these both are going to conform, is, I mean, there's going to be a building permit issued, but there's no further action really required by either us or the city council, right?
To officially create the plat, yes. Yeah, so it's a subdivision application preliminary and final plat.
Okay. But, yeah, I don't know if we get into the details of whose wall is what at that point or not, but I just want to make sure it's clear for the homeowners in the area and obviously the applicant, too.
Right, this is a code-compliant plat, but those details need to be worked out.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Elkhart?
I guess, very much in support of this, since both comply and there's no variances required. And I guess as we work on our ordinance changes for, and during the project that we're working on now, I think we might want to consider whether this exact kind of situation could be handled administratively by staff and whether a subdivision that complies and/or returns to original plot can just go right through and save everybody a lot of time. But I support this project.
Thank you. Any other comments or proposed?
Yep. I'll make a motion. I don't know, unless anybody needs to deliberate further. So granted, given that this, you know, staff recommends the approval, you know, we've, the proposed subdivision meets the lot size standards and we've listed out the conditions in the report and we've talked about the retaining wall ownership. A motion to recommend that the city council approve the request to subdivide this lot.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Good luck with the project. Want to thank city staff in advance, too, for coordinating further for the neighbor's benefit on how to make that a win-win come construction time. And this goes to the city council. All right, so that is it for public hearings and we are on to our reports and recommendations. We have two, one of which is a resolution for a property being consistent with the comprehensive plan and the second one being the next year's work plan. So we begin with Resolution B 2512, finding that the proposed sale of property at 5146 Eden Avenue is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And available for questions is our city attorney, ding 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 over there, Dave Kendall. Hello.
Hello, Mr. Chair, glad to be here.
Great. All right, so I don't know if there's any sort of, like, even a presentation about this or a screen share or anything, or is it?
I can give a verbal, kind of to tee it up.
Yeah, sure, thank you.
City council's been considering the development and sale of the old public work site over there on Eden, 5146 Eden. They have selected a preferred developer, Hempel Properties. They have pitched a mixed-use project that would include commercial and about 70 multifamily owner-occupied housing units. There is a state statute that requires the planning commission to make a finding that the land use considered in the sale of property is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The site has guided mixed use in our comprehensive plan, which allows retail, office, multifamily, residential, commercial-type uses. So the uses contemplated here are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Should they be selected and move forward as the developer of the site, they would still need to go through the full development review process. They would start with a sketch plan here with the planning commission and then proceed after that to a full development application. But the ask here this evening is just, are these land uses that are considered as part of the sale consistent with the comprehensive plan? And we believe, yes, that they are. So that's the ask this evening.
All right, I'll open it for questions and discussion, but first just want to be transparent. My wife works for the preferred development partner, so I'm going to be abstaining from this vote, but I'll just be facilitating. Should I turn it over? We talked, I mean, I'm not going to participate, I'm just going to welcome the motion. Is that okay?
Well, ideally, you would probably just turn it over to the vice chairman.
Okay, we haven't done that before, but I can start doing that now?
Yeah, I think the idea is that you can't participate in all the discussion and then just not vote because if you participate in the discussion, you may be steering it in certain directions or contributing certain ideas.
No, and that's like all abstain from discussion and vote, but just at the end, I will just lead the vote.
Yeah, I mean...
Just ask for the vote.
Yeah, if you're just going to recognize speakers, might be okay. The cleanest way to do it would be to just not participate at all.
Okay, I can change. We can change to do that, but out of transparency, we haven't had to do that before. So we'll just try to make it better for those who might be offended. And I'll turn it over to Commissioner Elkhart.
Okay, I'll do my best. So I think that where we are in the process is, are there any other further questions for Director Teague? Or about the process? Yes?
Yep, just a couple of questions, you know, as we go through the procurement process and identify the appropriate developer, you know, it'd be just good to know what criteria did the review team use in selecting? Like, what was somebody, the criteria that was established? And then when you went through ranking to identify the right developer for this project, how do you come to that decision? I think just some kind of guidance there would be helpful, just for folks to know how that came to be.
We can send that to the commission if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, I think that'd be good. Beyond that, I think, to your point, Director Teague, the land use requirements. I know we've talked about this property for some time and it seems like it certainly fits the comprehensive plan, so I'll be in favor of this developer and the development on the site.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Honneman?
Just a point of clarification. I saw recently that the Lincoln and Londonderry Small Area Plan had been formally adopted. Grandview Small Area Plan was not adopted. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's never been a small area plan done for the Grandview District. There have been a number of other, there was a development framework, there was a transportation study, there were a number of studies that were done, but not an official small area plan, like other areas of the city.
Got it, thanks.
But for clarity on that, Director Teague, it is still considered, what was created is considered part of the comprehensive plan? Or no?
I believe the transportation study was adopted as an appendix.
Okay, so...
But not the framework.
Okay, so the framework is technically not, or is not, is part of the comprehensive plan. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, is there a motion?
A motion to approve Resolution B 2512, finding that the proposed sale of the property at 5146 Eden Avenue is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention. Kerry's?
Abstained here.
I'll turn it back to Chair Bennett.
Thank you, Commissioner Elkhart, Vice Chair. All right, that was quick, nice. So, yeah, all right. So next we have, I mean, not to bring, well, just, it would be nice to know the framework's role in the comprehensive plan. Just, and I'll concede this for chair member comments, I'm pretty sure that's technically part of the comprehensive plan. No?
No.
That is in it. I'm almost positive.
If that was attached as just an appendix, I mean, it's a document that was approved by the city council, I can confidently say that.
Yeah.
So it's a recognized document.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, we can revisit next time, but hey, some more homework for all of us, yay. All right, so next we have the final report recommendation, that's the 2026-2027 work plan.
Yeah, this is really just to tee it up, to get you thinking. I put three things in there, you know, our usual land use reviews. The big one that we're going to be working on over the next couple of years, a year and a half, anyway, with the zoning and subdivision ordinance. And then next year, so this work plan is now a two-year plan, so it's not only '26, but '27. So in '27, we will start the com-plan update and get that planning started. But if there's anything that you want to think about to add, like a specific zoning ordinance change, you know, something that's going, that could be part of the zoning update that you'd like to study a little closer, give some thought to that over the next couple of weeks and we can add things to it.
And just to, I mean, clarify for those tuning in, this was discussed with the city council when we had an opportunity to sit down with them and go through it. And most of the things that were shared could be contained into kind of that bigger work plan item of the update to the code. So just for clarity, like, quite a number of what might have been separate work items is just kind of being lumped into that big work item, especially in advance of the disemmyля update, which would probably be on the next...
Yeah, yeah, it might be helpful to, you know, have some specific topics that we want to address and have those listed out.
Okay. I guess I'd open it to just other discussion around this. I know other members have been involved and want to be involved with specific items, but I just open it to Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, just two questions from me, or one question on a point. In terms of the adding some new items to our work plan, is that something that we should do before the next meeting? Submit it to yourself, Director Teague, or Chair Bennett, and then we could bring it up in the next future meeting?
Yeah, I think that would be good. You can email me your ideas and then I can put them in a draft and then commissioners would all have it in advance of the evening, in advance of that meeting, and we can discuss them then.
Wonderful. And the other point, I know one of the items here is the comprehensive plan update that we'll do in the next couple of years. And I saw like a spot there for someone to help, kind of be point person to help from the commission. I'm certainly willing to step in there. We certainly want to learn a little bit more about what that process looks like, because I know it's very involved. So I certainly want to lean on city staff and your team and maybe others who have done it, what that experience was like. But that's something that I'm really curious about and certainly want to help and support the best way I can.
Yeah, some of the things to think about is we're going to put in some detail for the comprehensive plan, you know, things for you to think about, do we want to update the small area plans? You know, we've got that one work plan item where we've identified other areas that we wanted to study that would be incorporated here. So just things to think about. I'd be more than willing to co-chair with you, Commissioner Smith. I'd love to be a part of the comprehensive plan.
It'll be a huge team effort regardless. A big time. Like, big time. Exciting stuff, though. Any other, like, questions about the work plan, or comments, or just topics that maybe someone wants to share about now that we can think about, instead of waiting till, you know, emails might fly around just before the next meeting? Sure?
I guess certainly share a topic. One thing that comes up quite a bit, you know, the city has a lot of events for kids, sports days, different things like that. And then we have food trucks that come and provide food and beverage to some of these events. From what I understand, like, the city, we don't really have a mechanism where a food truck could have a designated spot to just set up and, and, you know, sell food items. It has to be tied to the event in some unique way, and I'm not sure the, the history or the reason why we have it set up like that, but that's something that I was really curious about. I was chatting some time ago with our Hilton, Hilton Services Director, I think, and he was willing to, to look at that more. I know a lot of food trucks have to go through the requirements to sell food, right, and a screening and everything like that, but there's an ordinance, I believe, that prevents them from just setting up shop, and they have to tie it to an event. So something like that, just to analyze, what's the impact of us having food trucks have more freedom to set up in certain designated areas, or if it makes sense for them to continue to tie their food truck business to an event that we're having in certain parks. So that's just one of the items I was thinking about.
And that would be one that we could, you know, tie into the zoning ordinance. Part of the reasoning behind the not allowing food trucks anywhere is to protect the brick and mortar of restaurants that the city has, so that's the, that's really the number one reason for the prohibition.
I'd be interested in, in some kind of discuss, discussion or addressing, and actually hadn't thought about it until you brought this up, Commissioner Smith, inter-commission communications and things like that, and things that we could work on together and that are, you know, might be best served as joint efforts, or something like that, because, for example, we have food trucks. I would think Park and Rec has, might have addressed this, or might be knowledgeable in, in this kind of thing, because there are food trucks at the farmer's market and things like that. So they, they've certainly looked into it and, and what the rules are, but I think we would all do better, you know, as a city, if there was more integration amongst the commissions, so I'm not sure if that's.
You're just saying from like a process perspective, that the communication is more frequent or between the commissions, or?
Or specifically, I think, noting where in, in our specific planning that we're doing, we should be talking to, you know, other commissions or having joint meetings or something like that.
Last one, I promise. I have a lot of friends who own businesses within the city on some of these major corridors, and, you know, we have dinner, we start chatting, and then they start talking, right? And then we learn about some of their challenges. One of the challenges that they've expressed to me is that sometimes when we have new construction, new buildings going up, or the construction project is taking a long time, it affects their patrons from coming to their restaurants and their businesses. And so they were just asking a question, what could be done? How could we support small business close on their construction zones so that they could somehow be made whole again? And I, and I didn't know if, if the city had anything to do with that necessarily, or if it's something more so with the Chamber of Commerce, or any kind of insurance groups that they're part of, or something like that. But this is just a general question, just kind of opening it up, but would the city have any kind of involvement with supporting small businesses that are impacted by development that occurs within their area that prevents them from, you know, getting patrons coming to their restaurants or their businesses?
Yeah, our economic development manager, Bill Nuenendorf, is very concerned about that issue and works with the businesses to try to do what they can to prevent them. It's a, it's a, it's a big problem, not an easy solution, but it is one that I know Bill is very concerned about and does his best to try to help out the businesses in Edina.
Just a comment on that, too. I mean, a lot of the construction, too, and the, the outcome of it impacts the businesses also, sometimes positively, sometimes negatively. So there, there is a, a land use component to that. Say, they raise grade in an area, and now you need a retaining wall next to your business instead of sharing the grade that you once did. So that, I mean, it's a big deal, not just during construction, but also after, too, which I know, again, Bill and others try to find those win-wins, but some of that gets outside of our realm, where it's more city, county, or even met council or state planning, and we don't really have much of a say, which is a challenge pretty much everywhere in the state. But doesn't mean it's not surmountable in some ways with trying to get better feedback earlier. Yeah.
There's a process question, I think, for Kerry. Does this, you know, the, it comes up time and time again, sewer capacity, sewer capacity issues in the West, and it seems like somebody could study economic potential of solving that problem. And is, is that something that could be part of a comprehensive plan, or should be part of a comprehensive plan?
Yes, I know when they've been studying that west side, like the Lincoln-London Dairy issue, the amount of development, the high density that's needed to support upgrading those pipes, it's pretty, pretty, pretty high density. So those are the things that, that we have to weigh. Is it worth to put in those millions of dollars in exchange for very high density? So yeah, those two things go hand in hand, and things we'll look at it as part of the comprehensive plan.
Okay, thanks.
That it? Sounds good. All right, moving on to chair and member comments. I mean, I'll, I'll begin, I pulled up the Edina comprehensive plan approved. Yeah, so Appendix A, land use, A6 is a Grandview District Development Framework. Appendix B, five, is a Grandview District Transportation Study. So to clarify, that is a part of the comprehensive plan. No, they are appendices. Yeah, basically A1 through A6, and it's lumped into small area plans in a different categorization once you get to it, but it, I mean, it makes sense with the vote. I mean, we're voting to see is it consistent with the comprehensive plan, and all I'm just saying is, like, the development framework is a part of the comprehensive plan, so.
That's great, I love being corrected. I remember when we had one of the conversations about the Eden property, and there were conversations about was it failing to meet that threshold of what the vision was? There was some nuance that I've, has escaped me today, but there is some nuance in how we were talking about it, and that that wasn't the guiding document in the same way as some of, maybe some of the other conversations were, but the other areas. And that's what I remember, is that it's, it wasn't aligned in the sand the same way.
Yes, yeah, that's a good point, because the small area plans have a designated land use plan within them that's consistent with the comprehensive plan. There are several alternatives in those, in the development framework document that aren't necessarily aligned with densities in the comprehensive plan.
And I, and I guess some of the nuance to the history, and I know another commissioner was involved with the framework, was, it wasn't that it necessarily didn't get unanimous support, it was, like, that's just a designation it went with at the time, and then small area plans and that designation came after that, so 50th and France, 44th and France, 70th and Cahill. Those were small area plans that were developed years after the framework, and we always talked about going back to creating a small area plan out of it, but I think the reality is, the framework serves as a pretty good small area plan. It just is missing some specific components that you mentioned, which hasn't maybe prioritized its update, but it is a part of the comprehensive plan in, I guess, vision, goals, strategy, spirit.
Yeah, you may remember when we put forward the proposal for the comprehensive plan with the city council, and we were going to do all the different small area plans. You all wanted to do the Grandview District as part of it, but the council took it out saying, we've got all these other documents, we don't need-
We already have one for it, kind of?
Yeah, not a small area plan, but we've done all these other studies that we didn't need to take another deep dive there. We may want to here in the next update.
The main reason I bring it up is, I don't want anyone to think that we ought to discount that plan in any way, so. That's really the only comments I have relative to this tonight. Any others this way? Yep. All right, you got it.
Just really quickly, I was excited to see in the Edina magazine that showed up yesterday, or today, maybe, there was an ad from an architecture company inviting Edina residents to call them to build their ADUs. So we're getting up into the big time, so I just want to recognize Quincy and the others who worked on that project.
Calhoun over there?
I am doing an ADU in Golden Valley, which has a 12-foot plate height, as the tallest horizontal member, which gives a lot more creativity to half stories than ours. Does. So I found that very interesting, that they solved that in a different way.
That's very helpful. It's a reminder, too, to, you know, former, I guess, work items, specifically ADU. One thing that we discussed with the city council, you know, before we ultimately got it approved, was they were interested in the feedback loop, and we pretty much said, let's reassess after two years, see how it's going. I, I know for, I know Addison continues conversations, I continue to talk to the, the chief building inspector with the city building official, just to see how things are going feasibility-wise, but when you bring that up, I think we just should keep, keep in tune to that two-year, two-year mark and, you know, be, be prepared to actually talk about it and perhaps make changes to make it more feasible for others. Other comments? I know you mentioned last time, you know, a demo permit was pulled on France, now we're seeing stuff around the Opus site. Seems like a lot of the, you know, bigger proposals that have kind of stalled and not went anywhere over the last few years, we got a few of them going, so that's exciting. Any updates there, Kerry, that is worth sharing?
The only update would be Macy's, that site. They're still hopeful to maybe begin this fall, but nothing, nothing definite, but they're still hopeful.
City council did approve Rivian, and, and they actually asked them to put a door in the back of the building, so in case there's a fire, they go straight outside rather than through the mall. So I found that an interesting solution.
And that is interesting, because that's right where all the electrical was, going into that part of the building.
It's not.
Interesting.
Because it's very close.
Okay, it's close, but not, not right there, okay?
And if anyone is bored and needs something to watch, they're taking down the library. For those people in the bower on that side, like my grandmother, it's a fascinating all-day event to watch them do it. It's going to take them a couple more days, so don't miss that riveting experience.
Any other?
I think 5100 Eden is going to probably be coming down fairly soon, and with that, and the approval of this sale of the property, the former public worksite, there's going to be a lot of construction, right, on Eden Avenue for the next three years, maybe four. But then the bridge will be done. The only thing I was going to say, as far as comments, actual comments go, is there a tweet to that point now?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just going to remind everybody about the Fall into the Arts Festival, September 6th and 7th at Centennial Lakes. Please attend.
Thank you, Kerry. Just about the, did I read that the US Bank site, site plan is expired now, and that they would have to resubmit at this point?
Yes. Yep, so that PUD there at 70th and France, the site plans have expired, so each individual site would have to come back through site plan approval before they can start construction.
Any other chair member comments? Staff?
Yeah, my only update was the Rivian that, that they approved, and, yeah, that was it.
All right. One more item.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Meeting has been concluded. Thank you, everyone.